Hi.
This is all I heard.
Do you want to start?
Yep, you can start. Okay.
So we did meet with Kate and Molly and Michelle and Selena about the FY24 budget, recognizing that some of our items were under budgeted in regards to inflation around oil and snow removal. Thank you. So the news is, the bottom line didn't change because we knew it was already to a high percentage. So Kate and her team went through and decided to remove the one additional permanent sub. So these were taken out to make up for the increases we had to make in things we had to endure that weren't like that in October.
Esther, sorry to interrupt. I think we, I need to call to order and then do the pledge first.
Oh, it's the meeting meeting.
Yes, that's okay. All right, so we're going to call the meeting to order at 6:03 and we'll do the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lester, you want me to sit right here and just cozy up?
Yeah, Lester.
We also captured Selena's budget to decrease the special education five tuition, that's some changes from forty thousand, a little bit out of tax, a little bit out of special ed transportation due to that, it's no domino effect, those two things were related. And then decreased field trip transportation because we've had a large increase of homeless, which the law requires that we're responsible for transporting that. So we had to add almost fourteen thousand in that line, so we had to, we took it out of field trip transportation because that's really the only place that we could take it out of. But we are finding over on that line this year because we're having such a high increase in special ed, I mean homeless transportation.
Yeah, and the five years that I've been here, we've never actually had to use our operating budget for anything related to homeless families. And this year, our transportation, just transportation part for homeless, and this would carry us through the end of the year. We did the numbers through the end of the year, it was twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars. So given that number, when we looked, we didn't have this information, obviously, when we were building the budget originally in September or October. And now, now that we have the information, we put it into the operating budget for FY24 to be reflected.
And in that same vein, we also increased the fuel oil line by twenty-four thousand due to the increased cost of fuel oil and increased operation of plant repair and maintenance. Lester, to your point, and we looked at actuals by ten thousand, and that's usually related to our HVAC system. So, and then the related services for special ed, we increased by eighty due to other needs that have come up that we're fully aware of now that we know will happen next year. So in order to offset that, Kate and her team went through and decreased it in the other areas. So the bottom line is the same, the increase is exactly the same, however, those changes were made. And you might make copies of this sheet just so you guys can see what I'm saying.
And then I'm going into, into Profund and maybe you could print out the updated budget, Molly, for FY24?
Ten.
I don't have print directions.
No, let me give you my computer to do it from because I do have print directions.
Oh, okay, sure.
So when you get the stuff, you'll see those line changes, the line changes that we made just this week in order to reflect the costs we knew were going to happen around the oils most likely and the other things we talked about. But like I said, we did, I said, we cannot, we were clear with, I think Heidi, the fact committee was clear that that was already a high percentage, so we didn't just want to add that additional cost in. So we went through and Kate made some changes that she felt were the best changes to still meet learning needs, but also not increase the bottom line percentage.
Or you know, I'm just going to sign in as me then? Okay, and then just email it to me?
And will we, will we be able to see that over and out?
You mind doing that?
What did the change was? Okay.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you. So if you go to those lines, you'll see the increases and decreases reflect the cheat sheet that Kate's copied.
And Molly's going to send me the updated budget and I'll print it and I'll give you guys copies.
Okay, thank you.
So the only other thing, Kate, could you speak to, I know you guys went through and really looked at special ed's for next year, which reflected some of these changes and to the fact committee recommendations for us to consider, you guys to look at, where did you end up with that and maybe start there? Does that make sense?
So the out of district line that we had been looking at in previous budget conversations for FY24 reflected three out of district placements, that was what that number was based on.
I can make copies.
Since then, we've had several team meetings and one of those students will not be out of district, but instead we're receiving, so when we talk about contracted services, one of the things Selena had talked about was like, sometimes that might be a swallowing specialist, sometimes that might be an audiologist. Sometimes it means that that student might have an individual ECBA, which is a board certified behavior analyst. So really depends on the student's profile and those to sort of determine those contracted services. At the beginning of the year, it was highly likely that they would be, it would be an out of district placement, but the recent team meetings with the progress the students have been able to make while being in SNS and connected to the community, which is absolutely essential when we're talking about students feeling connected to their home. That the student will be here next year, so it comes out of out of district and it gets allocated to the appropriate line. So again, it's a wash in terms of your bottom dollar, but it's, it has to align to auditing, like it has to be appropriate line to the appropriate function and code, and so that was done since meetings have taken place, which is something to celebrate.
That's why the contracted services now says eighty thousand.
So that's, I mean, that's such a huge celebration. We're, we're over the moon about, about it.
So that being said, Selena, after, then I met with Selena and Kate and Kate, so what's built into that budget is real costs, what they anticipate as real costs as far as out of district and contracted services. There isn't anything built in really in anticipation of, it's like, one is probably a hundred percent and the other one's probably ninety-eight percent as far as out of district. And then the contracted services reflect the latest information, so that's accurate also for next year.
I guess the one I'm thinking about is the sub, I mean, we talked about last time, how important that was and essential and.
Yep, so right now, we're functioning with two. We've had a posting for a third for a very long time and couldn't even fill it. And so while ideally, yes, we would like to have four, even having three next year, we budgeted for four, even having three would be a person up from, an additional person up from what we currently have. And when we were looking at the increases basically due to inflation that have had a huge impact and why we're kind of in a tough place with the FY23 budget, it just felt like, I mean, I feel like it's, you know, it's like always that prioritized question for like, what actually has, what is most paramount down to, right? Like prioritizing those things. And given that we can't even fill a position now, it was a lofty hope to fill two for next year, and it felt like that was a place where if we could fill one, it would be awesome and then also be able to offset some of the things like the fuel costs, which is tripled or, you know, the things that we just.
And what about, is the library impacted? Remember, we talked about you were hired for that position?
So the, the, we don't, the library right now is filled by a permanent sub. We don't know where that's going to lead.
Yeah.
I think the issue with permanent subs is, it's amazing to have them, but most of them are looking for a teaching job, right? That's why they're doing it, and so it's hard to retain them for a long, we've been super fortunate with the ones that we do have, but we did lose one this year. She touched on it for teaching job. And that makes sense, right? This is an awesome place to get the experience and then be able to, substantial difference in salary to be able to be a teacher in the classroom.
So Kate, I just sent you that email.
I will print that. Thank you, Molly.
Do you want to talk about the, the ten thousand you're adding to the maintenance? Yeah, do you want to, because I know Lester had some concerns about the health of the building, and so I just wanted to touch on that again.
So I can do that in two parts. I was, I'm just going to print this so you guys have an actual look at it.
Thank you.
It was probably easier. And then we just make a bunch of copies for the ratings. Thank you. So we'll answer that in two parts. The additional cost is simply just inflation. It is not about a matter of additional things that we're worried about. It is not a matter of, it is truly like everything costs more. So I can give you an example, we just had to replace part of a circulator pump, which is not unusual, may be replacing. What used to be fifteen hundred dollars is now thirty-five hundred dollars. It's not, and those things are going to be replaced over time, even when your equipment is brand new, like those are the things that, you know, just like your car, like it just needs replacing. So that was sort of just accommodating for those things. And the reason we were able to adjust those numbers are because we just did the circulator pump. So the circulator pump was done like four years ago, fifteen hundred dollars, it's thirty-four, five hundred dollars. And we were like, okay, so if we need to be thinking more strategically about inflation around those things, you know, another comparable under, you know, maintenance is like the walkie talkies, which now have their own line. A year ago, they were four hundred, now they're about six hundred. Like those are the things that we're experiencing. And so when we're building our budget in September, we're using numbers from the previous year until we get updated numbers, and then this is what we're experiencing. And we really thought, again, we were really trying to stay within what we had talked about and be really strategic about that and base our decisions on the actual needs, not necessarily the bottom dollar, but be really conscious of both of those things. And this felt really possible. So that answers that question, Kate. The other thing I wanted to just, you asked sort of about like implications across long term. So if you were to look at that analysis that was done in 2019, towards the very end of that document is sort of a, it's like sort of a summary of like life expectancy, but like things they think need to be done in three years, things they think need to be done in five years, and things they think need to be done in ten years. That is based on things like life expectancy, wear and tear, updated laws and RSAs, like there's a bunch of factors that influence whether that fell in the three year, the five year, or the ten year cycle. And the things that we had talked about, what, well, I shouldn't say we, when EEI and Banwell came in, they talked about many of those systems you do together at the same time. You don't do this part of it and then two years later do this part, because often then they have to be retrofit and that's not super easy to manage. Part of that came up with boilers, I think, one of the years they had talked about whether they were going to move to propane or potentially natural gas or potentially pellets. And it's not as simple as like, we're just going to replace that boiler with that one. They're like, oh, it's a whole retrofitting system. And so that kind of feeds into like when things happen or don't happen. The other part of it is, and EEI was really clear to share that with, when they presented to the board at the time, while the building is thirty-two years old and there are parts that have to be replaced and there are things that we need, know we need to do, they felt really good about the bones, right? Like they weren't super worried about like deterioration, they didn't feel like any one of the systems had been overused or abused, they were just reaching their life expectancy, just like when you own a home, right? So they were really felt good about that and they shared that in their presentation and in their report. So in terms of the items that we've been talking about, the boilers, the HVAC system, all of those are on the five or ten year, none of them are on the three year. So that's important to be thinking about, and those are big ticket items. And additionally, we have those items, whether it's HVAC or the boilers, those are inspected every year. We've used the same company for a long time. And they give us an idea of like, yep, you're good for this long, we're not super worried about that. Your inspection came really through, the wear and tear seems fine. I can speak to the boilers, we have three boilers. We use one ninety percent of the time. If it gets exceptionally cold, the other two automatically kick on. We rotate the number one boiler monthly. So when you think about that, the building, a good percent of the time only runs on one boiler and we've got three, right? That's a common system in something, an organizational building this big. But so if one boiler goes, you're looking at thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars. We have that in the trust fund. The company's not feeling like that's going to happen, and we still could run on two for a very long time and not even worry about the third not being there. And you wouldn't now replace all three preemptively because you don't know what your building renovation plan is going to be, and that has to, if you want the boilers to accommodate whatever you end up deciding as a renovation, and you might get three that then don't accommodate that much of renovation, right? Same with HVAC system. Part of what's being talked about is whether you have dehumidifiers or ACs upstairs. Well, you don't want to do much to your HVAC system now because that would not accommodate that later. So there's, it's, it's all woven together and it's being strategically through Banwell, through EEI, through the work that you guys are doing. I mean, all of those factors are considered all the time. It's not, if EEI or Banwell or Tim felt like there was a danger around the trust fund not meeting that, that that would be the conversation, but the experts are not telling us that we need to live in that place of fear and feel like, we have a concern for that right now. Did that, I think, did that kind of what you were?
Yeah, I mean, Lester, does that answer kind of your question on?
Well, I just put together a handout. I guess even though I'm, I'm accounting degree, I keep thinking operational all the damn time, okay? And my, my main concern is, you know, over the time I've been here for four years, the, the, the head of the board has turned over and the committee has turned over. So operationally, I'm concerned about how does knowledge get passed, okay, from board to board? And, and I guess my, my biggest thing is on the, the funds that we put together for the, I'm going to say significant hits that I'm known for, okay, the fund we put together, I don't know what the process is for that. Okay, and maybe you can kind of solidify, I think, do you have, I, I, there's clearly some how-tos when you do your budget. Is there how-tos when you try to analyze what kind of reserves you need? I guess that, that's my question. Is that done us at the SAU?
No, our, our how-to in this case was the 2019 audit that said in three, five, and ten years, these are your major things, which I, you got a copy of that, I think, Jensen.
You have a copy of that, right, Lester? You were talking about it.
The what?
The 2019 audit facilities report.
I have a copy of it.
Yeah.
You mean the thing that you just sent me, the, the summary or what?
Yeah, I, oh, no, that was just a calendar, but there was an attachment of the audit report. I'll, I'll send it to you.
So Lester, what we do is we, we have an audit on our facilities in 2019, which outline the life of things like the boiler, like our HVAC system, like our building itself. And that audit overall, like Kate explained, was pretty positive, meaning that our buildings has good bones, is how they said it. There are things that are, that are coming out of end of life, like our refrigerators doing our home, you know, like we expect to get ten years out of a nice refrigerator or five years or whatever it is. So when they do the audit, they say, these boiler systems, you expect the life expectancy to be around thirty-five years. You're in thirty-five, so you got about five more years on this boiler system. So that audit is what then drove the board at the time, 2019, to decide, okay, do we want to try to replace a boiler, which to Kate's point, didn't make a lot of sense because there were other things that once you touch the HVAC system, then that kicks off code for the fire system and sprinklers. So after that audit, it became the focus of the board to really think about, do we need to do a renovation in this building to meet educational programming needs as well as the numerous maintenance things that were coming up in the next five to ten years? The cost benefit and the pros and cons. The board debated that and they decided to move forward with investigating a renovation project, which is underway, which then kicked off some more work, which Jen, I think emailed you too, was like the programming report and then the work that Banwell did about three options of our building, the renovation, et cetera. So the, the board, this board has been really looking at that building committee, which Jen is in the chair of, and how we work to get our renovation perhaps on a warrant in 2025.
Yes.
Right? So that's what this board is working on. So in the meantime, we know our big ticket items according to that audit in 2019 could be a boiler, could be something related to HVAC. There is enough money according to the quotes that we got now, which, you know, three years from now might change, in our building maintenance trust that we could use if an emergency occurred. If our, all three boilers failed, we would have money in, we would go to the board, request, say our boilers failed, we've got to have heat, that's an emergency, that's what this capital maintenance trust fund is for, is for emergency situations that you didn't budget for. So we anticipate according to the 2019 report, that our boilers will last us a few more years. Should that, just like a refrigerator, all of a sudden we think it's going to last twelve years and it only lasts eight, we do have some money set aside, a savings account, if you will, in that maintenance trust fund to pull out with the board's permission, they have to okay it, to, to repair something that's emergent, to keep our building running, like HVAC, boilers, something like that. That's different than, we'd really like to build a little room for a new zen den. We wouldn't go to the maintenance trust for that. That's not emergent. That's a nice thing that if you want to build into the budget or something like that, we would do that through our operating budget. So the trust funds are set up for things that we don't anticipate based on the knowledge that we have in special ed and in maintenance. So this board and, and all of us feel like we're in pretty good shape because that maintenance trust has a nice, healthy fund balance, as well as we're in line with the priorities of that audit in 2019 of the entire building regarding maintenance and facilities. Does that make sense?
Yes, okay. But I'm, I'm just going to throw out my dumb outside the box thinking. Okay. And, and what, what I did, trying to understand the last four years and trying to understand the history and the process, I decided to put together this little synopsis here just, just for thought, okay, and, and process. So I was trying to compare the funds, this, you know, the fund that you have here for the school, compare that, what do we have on our buildings in Strad, in municipal center. There's a report that comes out that gives the balances. So if you, if you see on that, you see for the capital maintenance, this is equivalent to the schools fund, okay, you have a highway, four eighty-five, have radio communications, town building grounds, three thirty-six. I think that the town building grounds basically is municipal center.
I don't know.
Well, I'm, okay.
I don't know either.
But, but the process for the town structures and buildings is every year, the various functions within the town look at their asset, their buildings, this and that, and they either propose or not propose, should we put more or less money in the fund. So it's kind of like a, a standard procedure, process and flow. Okay? And, and, and when I went back and I kind of captured some of the minutes, is this going to help me? So it's kind of a combination where they would say, we need this, we don't need this for that or that. So I just kind of looked at comparing the, the funds, the week, the, a year ago when, when, when we were talking about, you know, what's our exposure, Joe from the town, he says last year, and Joe and I, we kept forcing, do we need to put more money in? The hundred thousand that was put in in twenty-two was, you know, something out of the air because we didn't have any detail or something like that, hundred thousand. The year before that, we, Joe wasn't here, I was, we put fifty thousand in just because we didn't have detail. So I'm saying that the process to me should be putting numbers together, analyzing what some of the things I was asking you. Okay? And what I, what I hear from, from your email, I hear, I heard about this 2025 bigger picture, which is like 2027, so we're talking like 2028, to do something major was my, my impression. And that's okay, but it's like, what about from here to now? You know, from now to there? What is, you know, the process type of thing? And, and again, everyone's new, everything turns over, things get lost, I'm not exactly sure what the SAU has to keep everyone informed, how to, okay, kind of do part of that analysis.
Yep.
Okay, so it's more the operational side I'm talking about because the money that you're talking about is put there has been put in, okay, at least a hundred and fifty at our recommendation the last two times.
So our, our process is to have a building audit, which we did in 2019. That's usually where we start. So when, because we changed at the SAU also, right? So I've had Stratum Board, I think this is my third or fourth year. So when we came in, there was concerns raised around building space, programming needs, et cetera. And so that board okayed the funds for an audit. So now that drives what we do. And as I mentioned, the board has decided, instead of dropping fifty thousand here, that kicks off another fifty thousand here and putting that in our operate, operating budget, they've decided to move towards a building project. In the meantime, we have analyzed that and we will see the increases in the operating budget. For example, we added at the beginning of the meeting, that's where we went through in our maintenance line for repair, plant maintenance, we added another ten thousand based on actuals. So we put ten more thousand in our operating budget to the maintenance repair, knowing that we're working towards this building project. So that's where, how we reflect it, we look at the 2019 report, we see where things are with our facilities manager, Tim Harrington, he makes recommendations. Hence, because HVAC has been coming up, we put another ten thousand in the operating budget, proposed budget, and then we'll continue to work with Jen and the building committee to move that renovation project forward. So that's how we plan, we look at actuals, we look at that audit that we had in 2019, which is still fresh enough to use as a guide. That's kind of the guide that drives the thinking. And then we would, if something comes up, we have that maintenance trust. Some years, we don't recommend that we put another warrant on because, for example, this year it's at eight point eight. That's high. And we also have another warrant that in regards to negotiations and contract, that'll be another piece on there. Also, we could put a warrant on from fund balance with no taxation language that was in last 2021, right? Not an impact, so doesn't impact that eight point eight, seven increase. However, because we're building budgets so tight, as the board wanted us to do starting three years ago, I know and this board knows that we will not have probably fifty thousand left the end of this budget. It is very tight, right? We've frozen the budget and that's not due to building issues, that's doing, mostly due to special education issues. So to put a warrant on this year out of fund balance is not probably, I wouldn't recommend it because the town may then think, oh, they put that on there, they must anticipate they're going to have a large fund balance, when really we're anticipating we won't have a large fund balance and we know that, and we've been really clear about that in our public meetings. You know, we say what the balance is and where we're headed, going to the special ed trust, we're going to have to go to the board for that. So that is why we wouldn't recommend this year from fund balance. That's different than if the board and the, and the FAC want to put a warrant in to raise and appropriate taxes. That would be on top of the eight point eight and the other issues that are on there. So that's for all of you to decide what you think the town will bear, given your concerns.
Okay. I'm not necessary, that, necessarily stating that you need to put money in there. I'm talking about making sure there's established procedure and process to do the analysis.
And there is, yes.
Okay.
There is.
To, to do the analysis, because if you kind of look, if I put my Stratum citizen hat on.
Right.
And if you look back at certain years, okay, where they were going to catch up a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, directly the tax type of the thing, the intent of the contingency fund is to smooth out unknown, you know, major casualties. So I'm just, what I'm, what I'm really saying and recommending is, we, we need to make sure that within the SAU process, okay, we are looking at that, doing analysis, it's, if, you should get everyone involved, the auditors, you shouldn't ask the guy who's changing the pipeline at the school or something like that. But in, in one of the things I saw, it worked in twenty-nine, it made the, the board responsible for that, for that specific maintenance type of the thing.
So I can tell you that we have a process and it starts with an audit that's, that's our guiding document. We work from there. We work with the facilities manager, our business department, our current administration and the board, year to year, looking at past expenses, using that 2019 audit of our entire building as our guide right now. So that's the process. We use that kind of foundational document, what were last year's actuals, did anything come up, talking to the facilities manager, what's the contractual price of transportation and mo, and snow removal, has that increased? And then those increases are reflected in the operating budget. So there is a process every year that we do that, using that 2019 audit as our kind of foundation document.
I, I, I hear you. I'm, I'm here to advise. I'm advising an operational process. That I don't know how much any of the new ones know anything about what this fund is, you know, do you or don't, I don't know. You raise your hand, you don't, don't have to, but there, there needs to be a process is what I'm basically saying.
Yeah, I do understand it. I think too, like, you know, even though the board turns over, there is staff, you know, and obviously we have the architect talking about the new building, there is continuity even if the board changes over. So for example, we started meeting with Esther and Tim and Kate last summer to come up to speed on what's going on with all the issues and, you know, as we think about what a new building, there's obviously con- And, you know, as we think about what a new building, there's obviously consultation, there's history presented. So there is continuity in our meetings, even if it's not board members, there's other continuity. And, you know, I, I, I definitely understand what you're saying and.
That's my, that's my message.
Yeah.
Okay. It's not, I love everyone, okay? And I'm saying that somehow, you know, we, we shouldn't give a hundred thousand, you know, coming from us without knowing what it is, just for more of the safety factor type of thing. And that's what's happened the last couple of years, okay? And when I look at the documentation, because if you read, these are the notes from the meetings where people are asking a lot of questions, what's this about, why, where are we going, this and that? I, I didn't get the, the 2019 addendum two copied, but I think Bob, who was the head back then, he did an excellent job of, of catching on. Okay? But the catch up was the paper was already committed. Okay? And we need to be ahead of the, the process, so.
Listen, maybe, maybe I can help. So I, I think you're looking at like the town capital plan, and you see like twenty items on there, and they're all kind of sequenced out, there's planning, you know, this year, next year, the year after. And I think what I heard here is they have a different process, they do these audits. There was one in 2019, and it said, no, you said what it said, I'm not going to repeat it, but essentially, nothing substantial to bridge them to 2025, and they're doing a renovation process that's going to take care of a lot of the things. So they're just going about it differently. The renovation process is going to handle all the capital lists that, I think, what you're saying. So they're, they're doing it, they're just doing it in a way different way, that's all.
Well, no, and, and I, I understand that, but what I'm, what I'm saying basically, that would be a piece of, that, that's like the email I sent you, and I just, you know, I, I said, if there's something in the new additions, that should be part of the thinking, if there's something real time, okay? And, and it's also, as a taxpayer, you want to try to smooth out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Smooth out the, the, the school's tax portion of it as much as possible. And for the years that, that, and we were kind of new at the same time, trying to learn this and that. But I, my perception was, the, we set the budget based on what we think the town will pay. Okay? What, what the citizens will pay. And, I mean, again, there's the flavor, well, this is not a good time to put money in this net. And, and my concern is that we, we also want to try to help smooth out, you know, with funds, whatever we need. And I think the one that you have on the special ed, you're right on ball with that one. I mean, you know this and that, and that, that gets attention really good. The, the, this maintenance thing is much more complex, and it's all the variables involved is what I'm saying, should be in that process. And that's what I'm recommending.
Great. No, I, 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 I think we have a good process, but I think, you know, the board can decide if they want to alter it or change it, and.
Well, and as a resident, as a, as a resident, I'd like the, if I'm sitting there and there's this fund, there, this, this, I got my, this, this stuff from the schedule that they put together over there, and that's where I put the numbers here. But as, as a resident, I'd also be concerned about, you know, things are going to hit heavy. We can say, yeah, our, our, our gas and our fuel went up X percent, and who's going to argue about that? I'm paying it for the pump myself. But if something hits and, and we go, oh my gosh, we forgot it. So it's like building up for the unknown.
That's what that fund is, that, yeah, you're right. See, that's what it's for, yes.
So to me, I'm, I'm always thinking of being offensive and stating things in front when I'm presenting versus trying to play, you know, after the fact, explain why. So to me, I would say it'd be nice even for the, in the presentation, I guess, what the board's going to do, they talk about what's to come, what we have there, et cetera, and we feel, but, but it is not part of the, you know, the big picture. Because I'm always forward.
No, I, I hear you, and I think that that's something that we can talk about when we put, we're going to talk about that tonight, the presentation and at the public hearing. And, you know, we put on, every month we put on there the building committee, and there's updates. And so we, we are talking about it quite a bit. And so I would hope that if people have questions, they can go back and watch the video or send them to us, because we, I feel like we, we have a pretty good handle on it as far as right now. And I know Jen's really on top of the building stuff, and, you know, so send, send your questions our way, and we will definitely, you know, have answers for people. And I think we can definitely do that at the public hearing as well. I know last year, there was a slideshow, I think you put together, and Cheryl helped with that, so, I mean, we can talk about doing that as well, so that people can see, you know, see the numbers and kind of really feel comfortable with what we're, what we're proposing.
Well, that's where Kate and I, we always talk, I keep telling, give a story, give a story. That's the communication we have on just not giving numbers.
Sure. No, yeah, and that's important, so. Does anybody have any thing else to add to that? Okay? Do we have any other thing? I wasn't here at the last meeting, anything else we had to kind of recap on?
Well, I don't think to recap, but now what we need to do is finalize how you want the warrants, because the.
Right.
Recommendation from the FAC was that separate special ed.
That's right, okay.
And so do you want to, as a board, pull that out? Or do you want to do an operating negotiation, you know, the contract and the three separate ones? Or do you want to do operating and special ed, and then the other ones that are always on there? You know, like if the, there is one on there, if the contract fails, the next warrant says you're allowed, do you, is it, do we hold a special meeting?
Right.
The board choose to do that. So those two kind of go tandem, those two would be on there, one with the amounts for second, third, you know, the.
Right.
Amounts of the cost of the negotiated contract. And then the one after that is always, should number two fail.
Right.
Number three, can we hold a special meeting if you choose to?
Okay.
Most of the time we don't, we wait till the next, you know, we take the year to renegotiate and wait till the next, but at least it gives the board an option if they choose to, and that passes with a yes, you can hold a special meeting just about number two, which would be a new contract.
Okay.
So those two will definitely be on there, because it's, that's non-negotiable, because that's what y'all negotiated, and then the second one.
So it's, it's operating?
Operating, contract. If contract fails.
Fails in that one.
Special meeting. And then there's one weird one on there.
There's another number.
Other circumstances or other or something, which the moderator explained.
Yes, yes.
So it's, it's a non-monetary one, it says, to hear reports of agents, auditors, committees, officers here, chosen to pass a vote relating there to.
It has to be on there.
It has to be on there by law. I said, what does that really mean? And the moderator goes, don't worry about it.
The other one is to transact any other business which may legally come before this meeting.
Okay.
So I think the big question on the table is, do you want to add an additional one, pull that money out of the budget? The, what was it, two hundred and something, which would be different now because.
So, yeah, can we see the numbers on that?
So we go to, on the new.
Go.
We go to the special ed area, which is.
The concern was, is that if we pull it out and it fails.
Right.
Right. And I did check with legal counsel, as far as can we then pull money out of, out of the, yes, we can.
Okay.
Just means you can't put any money in that year.
Okay.
Doesn't mean you can't put it on the, you know, warrant the following year to add money to the special ed.
So it just kind of pushes it down the line.
Right.
Is that on, where are we here?
It's two, it's the second page.
Starts on one.
And just to be clear, our recommendation was to take out anything that wasn't known costs for next year's operations. It was just if we were sort of projecting that there might be someone, or, or, or more than one, one or two students, that that would be what, that's why the trust fund is there. It's to create that safety net in terms of not affecting the operations budget if we do have to have one or two out of district placements, along with the transportation costs that go with it.
Right. So that's the difference with this budget, and that's why we had Selena scrub it as much as she could, what are known costs? So at this point, to Heidi's point, that the, that trust funds are normally for emergency or unknowns, we haven't really built in any unknowns except like a two percent, because that second student's about a ninety-eight percent chance they will use that money in that line for out of district. We did have a third built in, there were meetings, et cetera, and conversations, and that's why you see that money go to contracted services, because that's where it would be spent to keep a student here, based on progress in recent meetings, and, and that's great news. It doesn't really reduce the cost, it just pushes them to other services that they'll get in this community school instead of out of, out of district school, which is more restrictive, and we never want that. We always want our kids to stay in the community that they live in.
It did reduce the cost a little bit, because the transportation was a piece of that, but it's not substantial compared to like an actual tuition. But it did reduce it a little bit, because there wouldn't be transportation. And transportation is exceptionally higher than, it's not like our nine buses, it's very different.
Heidi, are you comfortable leaving in the two students in their transportation, being that there's no buffer?
Because those are the known costs for next year. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. So then I think we should leave.
So I would recommend, being that now that we're for sure this is known cost.
Right.
To Heidi and your point, because again, that trust fund is really for unknown costs. So it would be, I think, somewhat.
It's the appropriate use.
Since we've now budgeted taking out that any really unknown. Again, that, there is a student, you know, that people can change, and hopefully that would be great, and we get, they stay in their community school, but it is definitely, two cases aren't, are really aren't looking like that, that we will have the.
So we should leave it. Do, and do you, you guys and Selena feel okay with that? I mean.
Yeah, I mean, we went through, I mean, part of it was the meetings we've had, which felt really like celebratory, but we also went through this and were like, really thinking about the knowns versus the potentials, or even like the fifty-fifty versus like what is a really solid.
Okay.
We feel very confident in the way this has been real, reallocated to better reflect.
Okay.
Our knowns.
Any other thoughts from other board members on this?
No, I agree, it should be lifted.
Okay. All right. So.
So what, that being said, then the, the FAC committee, do you want to go back and look at anything again, or, you know, anything else before we bring the finalized warrants to the next, the next meeting, which would be, it sounds like the operating budget total that you see in here, the costs of the contract that was negotiated? Number three would be if contract fails, a special meeting, and that number four, other issues that comes before the board, whoever that's written.
Right.
Are you doing special?
Those would be the four warrants on the, the current, as discussed.
And no special ed or maintenance?
No special ed or maintenance, because I don't, out of fund balance, because we don't anticipate a fund balance of, to put money in there. We did, we would, I think, talk about that seriously.
Sure.
Again, I don't want to mislead the town, thinking, oh, they must be thinking they're going to have, you know, five hundred thousand so they can put a hundred thousand into maintenance that, we don't anticipate that.
Okay. All right. Does everybody feel okay with those, that, that plan going forward? Okay. So do we need to vote?
No, you don't approve it until after.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Because there may be input from the public.
Sure.
Says, we want you to add in this, or we felt that, and then we all can decide when we finalize any of the projects.
Got it. Perfect. Any other comments from FAC members?
I don't know anything. We said it last time.
All right. Thank you for all your time and input, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. Thank you, love.
Thank you.
Good night, thank you.
I'm surprised you just got up.
This, that's what I said on here.
Oh, I know, that happened, yeah, locked out, I had to go outside to come across.
So do, but, so I felt like he did, he sort of saying, if you're not going to exit, then here, that one should be together.
Yeah.
Which would be like.
Yeah.
They do four things, and then maybe in two more years, we're going to like, the day.
That's okay, we can, if he shows up, we'll go back to it.
Right, right.
Last time they were just at seven, I think.
Oh, that could be one of those.
Yeah. So then we just did it when we got here.
Okay.
We did for some that were dangerous, like.
So if there's, in years, if there's a fund balance in the head. There has to be a warrant article allowing us to put that fund balance in.
Okay, so you're just kind of guessing what your balances is.
Yeah.
Right. If there's a balance, can we take this much out of it, and put it in the trust fund?
Yeah.
And then the rest goes back to the town.
I see. Okay, that makes sense. Yeah.
Heidi, are you good to go?
Yes.
Thank you for your time and input, we appreciate it.
I guess the only other thing that I would urge is when you are presenting at both the hearing and at the district meeting, is to spend a lot of time explaining once again, where those, why there's such an increase, it's a huge line item on that special ed side, and we have students who require those services, who we are required by law to provide those services, and, and just really spoon feed the audits with that, because it's always new people that show up every year, and you're, you're teaching new people why, why those numbers are.
I mean, we did have, they just came out with for out of district, the expectations for next year's increase on out of district alone is fourteen percent, and that's across the board for, so like even that, when you think about a hundred thousand, it's immediately fourteen, you know what I mean? Like, it's substantial everywhere you look, and those are the numbers that we were given from our out of district placements across the SAU, so it's like, okay, it's a big figure really quickly.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, guys, thanks for the input, we really appreciate it, and all the time you spend.
Thank you so much, Sister.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, Adam.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Sister. We'll do, we'll do lunch or coffee.
Have lunch.
Thank you. Um, okay, so moving on to public input, do we want to start the clock on that?
Do you want me to have them come down now? Because you're going to have them.
Sure.
And our student.
Oh, okay, cool.
Our student will be here till seven. You'll know when you're exiting. That must be our secret.
Do we have any public input? No? Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
During, your negotiations last year, and one of the things that you guys had discussed was for us to internally look at our supervision and evaluation document and our process. And so the, at the end of last year, we actually met with a couple consulting firms to see like what they would advise, and potentially partnering with them, and then we, the end of the year, it was at the end of the year, obviously, because of the time for March. At the beginning of this year, additional staff members joined that committee, and we met and asked them to revisit the SAU's Portrait of an Educator document in that process, because now we have, they felt better about it, because now we have feedback from other schools that are using it, and they can hear that, and the members that joined the committee were really excited about the new document, so they're just going to come and give an update, as you would ask them to give a couple updates throughout the year about where they are, so they're going to come down right now to do that.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Perfect.
It's been awesome, like such a conversation.
Good, that's good.
Great. Perfect timing.
Great.
She's like, they're going to come down right now, and you open the door.
I texted. I texted, I said, you can come down now.
Perfect. We're pulling, we're pulling you up back there. Do they have to use the mic?
Yeah, they should use the mic for the video.
Yeah, just because they get to record it, and then we do the minutes before.
You guys match. Well placed.
It was lovely.[1720.74]
Hi, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. So we are here to just do like a really brief shareout from our supervision and evaluation committee that we have going on at our school right now.
This is Jeff Ortaf. For those of you that don't know, fourth grade extraordinaire teacher, wonderful. And then this is Whitney Forbes, who is a first grade teacher extraordinaire. Many of you probably know them. I just thought it would be.
Yes, and we are on the committee. And there's seven other educators plus administrators that are working on this project. So, why now? We are here to look at and revise and start to think about a new tool that we can use as educators. And we are hoping that this tool can be a little more of a competency-based approach for the educator, seeing as that's something that we're looking at for our students. It makes sense to match that for the educators, too. And we're using a tool called the Portrait of an Educator that is kind of aligning those competencies. And that's something that we have started to work on developing. We're hoping for this tool, compared to our last tool, to be more of an educator asset-based approach, so that we can really look at our strengths and our feedbacks. Our feedback to that can, can match our approach. And important to mention, too, that the tool that we're looking at right now comes from something that the SAU had been spending a lot of time to work on and build. One of our members, Katie Young, had previously been at another school and participated in the process that the SAU was using. And so she really shared a lot and brought a lot to our team to bring us up to date with what that tool looked like from the SAU perspective. So our, the differences from this current tool that we're trying to look at and develop from our past tool that we've been using is more asset-based, more of an explicit connection to the competencies for the educator, and also working on the ownership for the educator to take that feedback on and grow. So so far, what we've done, we've been meeting a lot last year into this year. And we are exploring right now, after kind of going through an initial phase of where should we start? Do we want to like start from scratch? Or do we want to start from something that's already been worked on a bit? Which we decided on using a tool that's already been worked on a bit from the SAU. And so, quite a bit, I should say. It's just a little bit.
A little bit.
I know. I shouldn't have made that assumption. A lot of work was put into it. Using and discussing, so like I had mentioned, there's the Portrait of an Educator and the Growth Tool. So we've spent a lot of time as a committee digging into that and looking really closely at that, and it aligns and matches with what we hope to use as educators or SMS. We took that information and shared it a little bit ago with the SBA, a PD, just sharing with them the tool, what it looks like, and then collecting their feedback, just really simply on the questions and the positives, which we're doing. And that's what we kind of synthesized and put together.
So we were super excited that the feedback was overall super positive, which was nice that everybody was so open-minded to a shift, or a potential shift. I think that there were like a few really bright spots for us, including it's really choice-based. So there's a menu of options that you can choose from when you are deciding who will be evaluating you. And right now, we kind of all just have our administrators, who our supervisors are, observe us and give us feedback, which has been great. But this allows us to capitalize on the experts that we have in our building and outside of our building. For example, if I was working on developing inquiry in my classroom, and I knew that Jess is really wonderful at helping students develop questions and dig deeply into topics, I could choose Jess to come evaluate me or give me feedback on, on certain things and certain goals that I, that are really specific, and that Jess has a lot of experience with. So most of the feedback was around the fact that we could choose who's providing the feedback to us based on the goals that we feel will help best grow our practice. The, I think the piece of that that's also exciting is that it will really create a culture that's based on collaboration. Truthfully, we don't really get to spend a lot of time in each other's classroom seeing what we, what each other is doing. And I think that this will really help broaden our understanding of what's going on across grade levels and help us feel really connected to one another. It also aligns with my learning plan, which is really great for us, too. Sort of makes sense in terms of streamlining our goals with our professional development and how we're showcasing that for recertification and what artifacts we're providing is much more aligned with this, this feedback tool. Another highlight for people is the fact that it allows for a tool that could be used by a lot of different diverse roles. So instead of having something that's really geared toward classroom teachers, it allows for our specialists, our counselors, the related arts personnel, everybody to access the same tool, just based on the choices in the menu. Most of the questions that we had after our presentation were logistical, sort of like how will this impact our administrators in terms of the number of observations that they're doing? What does this look like for first-year teachers? And that they would have one observation from administrators, but then have choice? And how would, how would first-year teachers use sort of the mentor program to guide their professional learning and their goals? A lot of people wanted more information on the process and sort of examples of the feedback tool being used, because you can also get feedback from your students, which is really exciting, and parents and the community at large. So the committee realized that people just wanted examples of what that looks like, real-life examples, and what, what other educators across our SAU, how they feel about it after having used it for a year. And we recognize that there, we do need to do some work around shifting the mindset toward us providing or receiving feedback as a growth tool instead of an evaluation tool. So with that, we are going toward next steps, which include Kate Lucas has, or is going to reach out to the other elementary school principals to ask them to sort of gather people from different roles in their buildings to have meetings with us so we can get their feedback firsthand, and so we can access their, they'll remove their names, but their feed, their actual forms that they fill out and what that looks like from all different roles. And we are going to develop a pilot program. We talked about having people on the committee pilot, pilot this tool to give feedback to the committee, but to our staff from our perspective at SMS, just to continue to ensure that this meets our needs as a school community as well. And from there, we'll decide if we want to develop a plan and a timeline for rolling this out wider, to the wider SMS community.
Great. I have a question. Are we calling this an evaluation or a feedback session? Or is there, I don't want to use the wrong term.
Like an actual tool?
Okay.
What are we calling the actual?
I want to know how many times a year this is happening, but it, it sounds like you're moving away from calling it an evaluation. So I don't want to use the wrong terms.
I think there's two pieces or ways to look at that. There is feedback for growth, which is the point of this. And then there are times when an individual may need an evaluation, which is very different. Like that is like, there might be a six-week intensive, there might be a performance improvement plan. Those are separate entities. But when you were, when we collectively look across a building, particularly in our SAU, we're so fortunate, the vast majority of the staff are very competent and very good. And this provides an opportunity to, to try something new and grow something into their toolbox they may not have done before. Or we may see trending data that's saying, hey, like this is something you need to be thinking about in our classrooms, and here we're going to provide some professional development, and you want to then probably implement it in your classroom. Something, it might be competencies, it might be inquiry, it might be whatever that happens to be like. That gives us this opportunity to really be able to think more about the feedback as in growth versus sort of evaluation, which is what our current system is. I think we work really hard in our post-observation conferences to provide lots of feedback and in the observation reports, but that doesn't align with the domain rubrics that we're using. And so we're constantly trying to provide feedback that's around growth and feels really supportive in that area. But it's hard when you're aligning it to domains that are evaluative, right? So this really becomes two separate pieces that allows us to do those things with, you know, more concrete way, particularly around those that are not looking to be, or in the place of needing that six-week intensive evaluative piece.
Okay. So like a peer-to-peer?
They can't evaluate.
Or colleague-to-colleague?
That's evaluative. That's feedback.
Okay. And so how often?
If it's written right now, it would be three observations, three.
But one has to be done by administrator. Of the three, one must be done by administrator, two are choice. They could choose administrator all three. And it also doesn't prevent us from saying, I came in, I now want to do it. Like an administrator could say like, you know what? I saw this, I want to come back in more frequently. I think we can do some work around that. Doesn't prevent that from happening.
And that's part of what we're going to be exploring and testing, is does that feel like the right number for our educators here? For how many times we're practicing this throughout the year? When you look at the whole picture of the observation, the feedback, the reflection, and then also tying into MLP with our professional learning, what's the right number for?
MLP?
My learning plan, where we.
Thank you.
That's really your successful follow-up research.
Yes, yep. I know the My Learning Plan. I don't know the abbreviation.
So it's still called, at least on the other districts, a Supervision and Evaluation Document.
Yep.
But the Growth Tool is the major feedback. And then there is a section of that document that talks about if there are concerns, it's a six-week intensive support, which then either at the end of that goes into an improvement plan or not.
Right. But this is different. This is, yes. This is that positive spin on the evaluation.
What we presented, what was it, May or June, to the joint board?
I think the other piece that I would add, or that I think is worth consideration, is that in a three-year cycle for a continuing contract, not a new employee at SMS or a new employee to teaching itself, in a three-year cycle, we observe them twice as administration, twice. Like, I can go in and do an informal observation or a walkthrough, but in terms of like the actual process of pre-observation, observation, post-observation is twice. So when you think about, like, we talked about like the gift of having our pulls in the building in a really cool way through that positive feedback loop, and then really having that, for us feels really, really connected. Because we're seeking those conversations all the time anyway. I mean, Jess is in her continuing contract, but I'm like, I don't get in here because I used to be able to see her four times a year. It was so great. I'm like, I just miss doing that. So it's like, it creates that opportunity that gets naturally part of our system, which feels really good from the, from the administrative perspective, anyway. As long as you like us coming in.
Well, and it's more spread out, too, right? The two that we see now is in one year, but then for two years, those observations don't happen.
And we write a summary at the end of three, without having done observations for three years.
Yeah. So now this model's at least once a year.
Yeah.
And then if you elect more, right, it'd get more formal. So it is a better pull.
And I think it just really supports the teacher and the role in their asset-based approach. Because every year, it's just so different, and there's so many things we want to go back on and see, you know, from other peers or students or whoever, that we might be choosing to receive back from. So I think it's really going to help us as educators continue to travel forward.
And the time, so if you're working on like a unit of study that you really want to develop your expertise in, and, or an area within that, you, you can choose to have feedback done more frequently within that time. So you don't go such a long period of time, where you're like, I'm not even working on that anymore, onto this. That was really desirable, too.
What's the, so you said you're going to like kind of pilot it. What's the timeframe? Like, are you going to take a whole year to look at that? Or would, do you have plans for that?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've discussed that and we've talked about that because our evaluation tool is tied to our contract.
Right.
We want to make sure that we align things in a logical place with that component. And we want to make sure that we have enough time to pilot and get feedback and make sure that this is going to be the best it can be for our educators and staff. So that's definitely part of our conversations that the committee is having.
Great.
On the committee, we were like, we'll start telling it now. We want this right now. We will go for it. So it's exciting that so many people are willing to.
Just to side note, for purposes that take, it is a research-based tool, asset-based appreciative lens. David Puppen Rider says you get more out of an organization for productivity and better results when you have an asset-based evaluation system, just for purposes of people watching it.
For the purposes of people watching, what's the asset part? Is it the, the assets within the building, the teachers who know certain specific things? Or what are we talking about?
So the asset-based piece, really focusing on the positive spin, is that when I, let's say I go in and do an observation, and normally, how we were all trained and education was to say, oh, you know what? Your classroom manager was awesome. But you really struggled when you were trying to get inquiry developed. The minute I say but to her, our brains are wired to go to fight, flight, or freeze. We can't help it. That's how we're wired. Versus, I say, I went in and your classroom management was great. Tell me about how you thought the rest of the lesson went when you're thinking about inquiry. Because you asked me to watch that. Because now it's very specific, what she wants to develop. She's already picked, she knows I'm going to be watching inquiry. Whereas in the other model, we had to watch, I don't know, 110 things on the domains. It was almost impossible. So now, I mean, before an administrator goes in, they've specified, my goal, this is what I'm working on, come in and watch me in inquiry. So already, so I can say, I can start the conversation, tell me how you think your inquiry went today. What kinds of questions did you hear kids asking? I heard them asking, da, da, da. How do you think that went? Well, I think it went pretty good in this part, but I'm not so sure about this part. Well, on your best day, what would that, what would students be asking? What kinds of questions? So I'm keeping, right? I'm keeping that creative, innovative mind. They're not being forced to fight or flight. They're being forced to keep thinking. You get to the same spot, but they're doing the work. I'm not coming in saying, well, if you had asked a question this way, you might have gotten more kids to be deeper thinkers, or something like that. So just by flipping how you ask questions, that's why it's called appreciative inquiry. You keep people thinking and being creative versus forcing them to that fight, fight, or please. And then they shut down and don't hear anything you say, anyway.
With kids, we call it a strength-based approach, I feel like, more frequently. And we're constantly looking at what kids are already doing well and what skills are close to approximating, so we can coach into and teach into their class, the same thing, but just with adult language.
What can you say to a kid? Oh, you did your homework, but you didn't do four of the five. You got the first one right, but you didn't do the fifth one. What happens to the kid? Uh. Right? Same principle. Versus, you did four. Let's go through those. Okay, now can you, can we tackle the fifth? You've got some questions here? Right, and says, oh, homework, check, check, duh, you didn't do the fifth one. Same principle.
That's the thing, gives us the opportunity to celebrate what's going really well and then say, so these are the skills you're showing me when things are going really well. How do you use those same things when it's harder for you? Or when those skills aren't as developed, right? Because you've got this, let's draw that explicit relationship between how those things are actually very similar, and use those things that you know you do really well to begin to use the things that feel really hard. And it can be such a positive conversation and help educators really be like, oh, I, I actually do this. I just haven't actually given a name to it. I haven't given it the language it needs, or I haven't articulated that in my conversations, and now I'm drawing that, oh, if I can do that, I can surely do that. This feels really, I feel really, I can be very capable at this. This is very doable for me. I just wasn't seeing that natural correlation that's there.
There's also a good opportunity with this model for teachers to do a lot of the reflection and the planning of what comes next. Right now, we write up the whole report. We even write the implications for future instruction. Here's the five bullets that you could try moving forward. That's all on us to write up, which is fine, but we're doing all the work on that. Versus the teacher saying, I got this feedback from somebody. Let me reflect on my goal. Here's how it meets it. Here's the next things I want to try that, maybe I came up short. They're doing all that reflecting piece on it, which is perfect because now they're empowered to take the next steps, versus just getting like that one week feedback. So it puts them in like an empowering place, which was where they should be. And to Kate's point, a lot of them are on the cusp of going, you know, moving forward in their practice in ways that they don't need us to come down on that. They just need to be inspired and created those, creating those opportunities for them to take next steps.
Yeah, but there are times, just when I've done it, been like, well, that doesn't fit on here. Yeah, but there are times, just when I've done it, been like, well, that doesn't fit on here. Like, because there's been things that I've, right? Like, oh my God, that was so amazing. We're having these like hour-long post-observation. We're like, it doesn't fit anywhere in this document. Because the document is so confined by these domains versus like the complexities of being an educator in a classroom. And I think one of the bullets on your slide was like the progressive teaching that's happening, right? It's not wrote anymore. It really is this idea of like collaborative inquiry and like that's not really captured in that. And that's not, it captured what was happening when it was written, right? A lot has changed. And so this, we're like, where do we put this? Are we just going to throw this on the implications part? Or where do you throw this? It doesn't really fit. And that's the meat of like our work together. That's why it's inspiring. And this allows for that to be captured in a way that motivates us. And I feel like it's what we're desperately seeking. And now we're trying to build something that's going to actually capture what we're trying to do. I cried with her. Like, I've literally shed tears with her. I'm like, I am so inspired by what just happened. I want to be in your room and I don't know where to put this on this document for you. I've had conversations about like this, you're well beyond what's happening here and here's the places we can still grow together, but I can't capture it. Like, that's what we want to do. Like, we want to feel so inspired by each other in our conversations. It's pushing us to places we never knew we were going to be able to go collaboratively and together. And I think going back to what we need, just said, they're going to be able to have that with their colleagues, not, I mean, with their colleagues, but it's different, right? Like, you're going to be able to have that with the people they teach next to you every day or that's upstairs in a classroom. And that's going to build the capacity in our building in places we're unable or haven't been able to do yet.
The flip side of that is you also have that opportunity for the six-week intensive, where if you go into a classroom and you see something that is not like, okay, this is not working for these kids, we have to address this now. The current model you have now, you have like a very small window at part of the year that you could put someone on a pit plan or create a pit plan. Otherwise, you have to wait eight months or find a way to address that. And it's like, no, we need to talk about this now. And even that six-week intensive is growth-based. Like, here's what we want to do. Like, we're going to put these in, we're going to put additional observations in place. I'm going to connect you with so-and-so because I want you to meet weekly and improve your practice. Those kids are going to get an improvement in instruction immediately, which is huge. And the goal is to improve that practice enough that at the end of the six weeks, you're like, good, we're in a really good spot. Like, this was great. Or we still have work to do. We can make a pit, you know? And that will allow kids to get what they need sooner. Right now, it would be delayed by months if you want to put them on.
Great. Anything else?
We're excited. Can you talk?
There's a lot of pieces that are, you know, because we're living it, that this offers that we can't access right now.
Great. Well, thank you. We appreciate that. Yeah, that was great. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Our student made it.
All right. I think we have a student update.
Come on up.
Oh, gosh, she's adorable.
Is that okay? It's talking in echo, but it'll be recorded.
Okay.
Go, buddy.
Hello, my name is Will. I am a student council rep for fifth grade. I just want to thank you all for having me tonight and let me speak to you, let me speak to you and talk to you about our SMS community. So we have in a monthly essential, it's compassion this month. Compassion is basically showing empathy and sympathy. It also means to care for one another because compassion is action. It also means that if you show compassion, you can pass it along because like caring is contagious. So you want to show other people, if you're showing compassion, you want to teach other people to show compassion. We're also doing a wellness challenge. This month, we're announcing an exercise to do each morning. We will start the music on the announcements and we start the exercise in our classrooms. We keep on going until the music stops and then we do a new one each day to support fitness and wellness. So we just want to get everyone's like fitness going, I guess. It's just something that we just want to do, I think. We also just finished up the rounds for the spelling bee. It's taking place currently at SMS. We just did the first rounds for grades two through five. Finalists will compete Monday and another round here at school. We will see who the spelling bee champion is at the final bee on Wednesday at 6:00 PM in the cafeteria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask if they have any questions.
Do you have any questions at all?
I do. What kind of exercises do you have planned?
Like, well, every day we have like, so like this, today we did like jogging in place. So like when the music starts, we do that exercise. Like, say if I'm jogging in place, I'll jog in place. But then when the music stops, we just stop and then just get prepared for the next day.
Awesome.
I think next week they're starting with a video that they're sending out to model the exercises.
Awesome.
I bet you can hear it in the whole building. You hear the whole building change.
The adults, you probably hear your, oh, my goodness.
That is so great. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Great.
Amazing. All right. I guess we're going to move on to the approval of minutes.
You're welcome to stay or you can sneak out.
No, you.
We'd all go with you.
It'd be a lot of time. Good job, Will.
Um, let's see. Do we have any changes to the December 14th board minutes? What about the non-public minutes? Can we pass them together, maybe? I think we probably can. Anything for anybody? So do I have a motion to pass or approve the December 14th public and non-public board minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Erin, thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And let's see, the December 21st public meeting or board minutes and non-public minutes, do we have any changes to those?
The only question I had, did we talk about having the sabbatical person come back and talk to us?
In the future.
Like a report back?
Okay, in the future. So we had asked for people proposing sabbaticals to come to the meeting, the day of their meeting, to talk about it. And I think for this specific one, we had said, since she's not here.
Exactly.
We do want to hear about this.
Okay.
During.
Yeah.
You did, great. I think in the past, the last one did come back and present to the board about the experience and how it, the implications for SMS post the sabbatical.
When we were talking in non-public, we had questions about the specifics. And so it would have been great to have that person here to chat, which I believe we had done in the past.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else in those meetings, minutes? Okay, do I have a motion to pass the December 21st public board minutes and non-public board minutes?
I can make the motion.
Okay. Erin, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, Ken? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain because I wasn't here for that day. Okay. I guess moving on to the superintendent report.
Okay, sure. And your board pack is occurring here financial. We took a really, really good look at this month. We know the budget is quite tight. So we had some ups and downs. So we encumbered a lot more for substitutes because we're just seeing a lot more substitutes happening this year. We have some positions that are unfilled, so we are adjusting that, assuming that we are eventually going to fill them. So every month we kind of release a little bit of it when they're not here. We had some changes in operations of plant in several different areas. You'll see where we had to encumber more for fuel oil. We had budgeted based off of a rate we had last year. The first time we got this year, we were like, oh, yikes. So we had to encumber some more money there. We continued to operate one bus less than planned, so we had to release the encumbrance there. And just looking at, we added some costs in the food service management, recognizing the increased cost of food. Did anyone have any questions?
I don't think so.
You don't?
Nope.
That's the 30-minute public input timer.
Okay. All right. If nothing there, we'll move on to trust fund requests.
Sure. I would, for the repeater, I would attest that the board goes into non-public since it's under emergency and safety serve.
Yep, you can do that.
And then special education, Selena has done a report. She's quite ill. So Kate and I are going to fill in that just in regards to, we had mentioned we were going to come to the board with a request for the access to the special ed trust fund. As Kate explains that and why we need that with unexpected costs this year, I would ask the board to approve up to a certain amount in that we will expend those lines down to zero first. So in case things change in the spring and we don't have to take as much out, then that's our goal is to spend the operating budget down as much as possible first, but still within that safe buffer. But we like to do that practice just because that's what the town raises and appropriated. So if we can get by with spending that, then great. But we have a sense that won't be possible completely given the unexpected costs. So I turn it over to you, Kate.
So the total that we're talking about unexpected special education costs that would potentially, if necessary, come out of the trust fund, total is $132,700. And then I'll give you the breakdown of what that comes to. The first of those is we had an unanticipated maternity leave within a related service. So it's not the same as hiring a permanent sub or a sub. It's, related service would be occupational therapist, speech-language pathologist. And so in the cases of education, when you need to fill that position, you typically go to a, an organization. So Birchtree might be where we would go for behavior, you know, board-certified behavior consultant. In this case, we had to fill an unanticipated occupational therapist who was on, we actually had two, I have to rephrase that, two, which accounts for $35,700 of that total that I mentioned before of $132,700. The second line is actually based on, we contracted through Birchtree for an additional or for additional hours for BCBA. Last year, we had two. This year, we have one. And we have an increased number of students that access the BCBA. So we contracted with Birchtree to assist with that. So one of the things that happens for, in order to have an RBT, which is a registered behavior technician, so it's like an ESP with a certain certification, in order for them to work with students and they have qualifications and trainings, they have to have oversight by a BCBA. And when you only have one that's doing both the services to kids and oversight, you run out of, that's why we had two last year. So that's $5,000 towards that $132,700. The next one is for a particular, it's related services, contracted services. And it's for a preschool student that was unanticipated. And it's for their services.
Okay. And that's, that's all of it?
No. And then, I'm sorry, that counts for $10,000.
$10,000, okay.
Yep. And then the last one is also an unanticipated preschool student. And it's all of their services combined, contracted services for $82,000.
Okay.
So just to remind the board, there's a total in that trust fund now of $481,848. So if you chose to approve the expenditure of the $132,700 requested, that would leave $349,148 in that trust fund as we aren't adding to it in this year's budget.
And that was a question that came up last board is if there was a need to access this year from this year, what would that leave it for next year? And it still leaves it with a reasonable balance of $349, which is actually not unreasonable. It feels very reasonable to have that in there given.
Okay.
So again, we would per Molly's instructions, spend down the lines in the budget first to zero. And then when we needed it, go to this if we need to, you know, you never know, a kid might move out. You just don't know how things could change and impact that. So we would definitely go to the budget, operating budget first and then access this for those unanticipated costs should the need arise. We do anticipate it, it will arise, but we'll do our best to minimize it as much as we can. But that's, on paper, that's what it looks like it'll be based on current needs.
And logistically, it does, it's spent out of the operating budget. And how it works is then the trust reimburses and relieves the cost. So come May, if we have to encumber this, the printout I typically bring might show in the negative if we're waiting on the reimbursement from the trust. Because you have to pay for it and then submit the receipts, the proof of service and all the stuff.
The minutes that the board approved it.
The minutes that the board approved it to show that you've spent the money. And then the trust gives you the money back.
Okay.
And we relieve that expense.
Okay. Do we have any questions? So we need to vote.
So I would, I would ask the board if they would make a motion to approve an expenditure up to $132,700 for unanticipated special ed costs out of the special ed trust fund.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do that?
I'll move.
Okay. Thank you, Ken. Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Jim? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I guess we'll move on to board reports. Building Committee, Jim, do we have an update?
Let's see. So Kate and Kate and Tim and Selena and I, there's a lot of Kate. met with Brad and spent like, I don't know, five or six hours touring three schools right after Christmas. So we looked at Golden Brook Elementary, New Market Elementary and Little Harbor. Yeah. And so Brad was awesome and he gave us all these floor plans. And then we went around and we actually like went into the classrooms and saw what the gym looked like and even things like, how did they arrange like their cabinets for backpacks and coats and what, how did they heat the building? And, you know, whether they had sinks or bathrooms in the classrooms. And there was a ton of information that was shared. And it was great. I know for, just speaking for myself, just to see kind of how Kate and Selena responded to the tours. And it gave us a lot of food for thought. And Brad was great with it. So I had a lot of notes when I got back. I started a Google Doc. I'll send the link to you guys if you could fill out notes. Yeah. Because I was thinking, we have a meeting, but I think we're just meeting now. And so at this point, maybe we just kind of record thoughts on the Google Doc. And then Kate and I are meeting with Esther next week, just so I can kind of go through in my head how sort of the next year proceeds, where we want to go. You know, I wanted to reach out to Brad to do the same kind of debrief. And what he said to me is, you know, there's, we have a contract that has a certain amount of my time on it. And so if you're going to take some of my time, let's make sure we're doing it effectively. And so, you know, that did really make me think like, we need to be very precise and clear about our timing and how we kind of move forward, obviously. It just feels like a ginormous project at this point. So that's where we're at right now. But it was really a great exercise. I'm glad we did.
It was really neat to see all the different options. It was very insightful.
Wyndham.
Wyndham's new elementary school. And that's a huge, brand-new building.
Yeah, it's a lot. It's actually at capacity already. Like he said, they've opened at capacity.
Over 1,000 students.
1,000 students?
Esther, one thing I know I had talked to you about was maybe having Molly in on one of those meetings. I don't know if the next one's the right one, because I know we're going to have to fill out stuff for the, to ask for the grant. So I don't know.
Right. So we double-checked the timeline.
You did, okay.
It has to be submitted by January 1st next year.
Got it.
Because then we can't do it in the summer.
So we have time, yeah. Okay.
So we have some time to kind of get through the preliminary steps and then pull Molly in to start. She's aware.
Okay.
And that's just submit a letter.
Yes, and Brad said that's very simple. It's really the following June, July, it's like the intense.
Got it.
Or that has to have a solid plan.
Okay. All right. No, that sounds good. So we have some time, so that's good.
Just sidebar, Ken, one of the things I was thinking about, Selena and I talked a lot about was a lot of the information that we're hearing at the safety committee meetings and just how the schools were addressing some of those updates that had to do with security. A lot of what we talked about was sort of like the color coordinating of hallways and even on the exterior of the building, color coordinating with the interior for the police or the fire. Those are the things that we'd been talking about and communication within the building and things like that. So it was helpful to have had those meetings and then be able to do that. You know what I mean? Like at the same time, even like egress, like all of those things were, it was helpful to have those things happening in conjunction because we really hadn't talked about that part with the renovation project was the safety. And that was really a highlight of a lot of what we talked about when we were touring, which was helpful.
Any questions on Building Committee or anything else? I think we're pretty, we have that meeting next week. So I think we're on the right track. All right. We'll move on to Policy. Erin?
All right. There are a few policies in this packet. So they're all first reads.
Okay.
So what we usually do for first reads is, do you have any questions? Heather has started doing these summaries of what's going on with the policies, which is so nice and so helpful because the meeting is a month before each of our board meetings. Like, I have it, it's tomorrow night. So it's a long time to even remember in my notes what each of these different things are. So if we want to just go one at a time and take a look at BBBC. We can, yeah, yeah.
I know Erin mentioned it's first read.
Yeah.
The board can choose to approve.
Yes.
After a first read, anyone who mentioned that, it's like we are as a NSAU on policies. And next month, we'll have how many are you doing tomorrow night?
There's like eight, yeah.
More. And that will continue.
Okay.
So if there's something that is a new policy that basically is right off of the NHSBA because of new legislation.
Then let's just get it done.
I would recommend the board consider at least approving that. If there's something you have questions on, you can approve to and not approve for. But if you feel comfortable approving, I'd recommend that you do because they're going to come at you fast and furious.
So how this works for the policy committee is last summer, a student, an intern, a...
Not last summer, last year during the first half of the year.
Okay, somebody.
Started to do a crosswalk.
Went through all of our policies, looked at the New Hampshire School Board Association's priorities and has identified what policies we immediately need to update, what's moderately coming and what can wait. So we're trying to go through and prioritize by topic what needs to be done.
So the caveat to that is the students started the work, then the legislative passed many, many, many new laws related to education over the summer, becoming effective August, January, different dates. So then this summer, the senior leadership team took two days at my house and finished the crosswalk. Super fun. And since then, we then have completed the priority list of these are required, these are optional, and these are recommended. So we were hitting up obviously the required ones first and then will continue in this vein and they're really related to the area of expertise. So for example, tomorrow's policy meeting, many of them are safety, it's too related. So I have, I don't know, seven or eight. The process is you take the new policy, look at the old policy in every district because not every district has the same policies that they've approved. And then you look in that policy for all the related policies and then you have to check all the related policies in it. And then you come back and that related policy actually is also one of the new one that been changed. Then you go to that new policy and then that has policies in it. So you can see why I was saying, you can pass them, could be good because the policy I'm bringing tomorrow has 25 related policies to it, which you'll all be seeing in the course of the next session.
All right, so let's take a look at BBBC. This is board member, district officer resignation. The last revision was October 2012. And it's just about how we resign and what happens.
This seems pretty straightforward.
It is very straightforward.
So I actually just had a question about that.
Yeah.
You cannot resign before the 25 policies.
I will march in.
Then you do whatever you want, yeah.
Well, okay, so there are these policies. Are there like strat of board policies? So for example, here's what I started thinking about this. What if, you know, a person leaves, like what do we do with their Google Drive, with their email? Is there any kind of exit interview? You know, what if they just cashed their stipend check? Like how does, is there any kind of follow up when a person leaves? Just to Lester's point in terms of like sharing information.
Policy because this is specific to.
Resignation.
Just resignation, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Is there policies that handle all that?
Procedure, yes.
So there's procedures that are not policies?
Yeah. Stop working, take a walk, yes, that is a policy. There's an offboarding, there's an on, HR has an offboarding policy.
Yeah.
And an onboarding policy.
So there are.
And an offboarding policy is different than a removal policy.
Jennifer means for board members.
The board members in the past that has not been in.
Just fade away.
Because usually, it's been my experience when a board member wants off, they want off, they don't really want to chat with me after that. They always offer to have an exit if it was one of my board members.
Yeah.
But usually I'm well aware by the, when I resign.
But their email and everything is completely right away.
That's part of it, yeah, they get shut down almost immediately. If it's at night and unexpected, generally speaking, the board member has already given the chair and myself a heads up if they're going to resign at a board meeting.
Yeah.
So once they, it's already too tech, so shutting down their email, et cetera.
Yeah.
Are you asking Jen about like how much data is retained and for how long and where?
Yeah, or just to Lester's point, like how is that information shared? You know, like if I resign tomorrow, am I debriefing to the next chair of the building committee at all?
Only if you wanted to, we would ask you to.
Only if I wanted to. So then that information is lost.
Well, that's why we try to have a S A U, an administrative member on every committee.
Yeah.
So we can carry that on should that happen. I mean, some board members have moved out of district.
There's usually two board meeting members on most things.
But if you had digital materials that you created that were important to pass along, I bet those aren't gone. I bet what you're doing is changing somebody's password so they can't get in anymore. But you're not immediately removing their account, are you?
No, their account is shut down.
Shut down.
Right, locked out.
Getting of their stuff. Right.
It's archived.
Stays. Your access doesn't, is no longer great. Right. I just wanted to be clear because anything that you do and have, that doesn't mean it goes away that day.
Right.
You just lose access.
You lose access.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so board member or district officer resignation. Does anybody have anything they would like to talk about? Do we feel like we can adopt this tonight?
Yes.
Great. We can actually, should we do them one at a time or do them as a group? Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So this one we will do. BBBE is along the same vein, how to fill an open seat.
The only question I have, is this like, we're 100% sure that it's in compliant with the RSA because I think RSA is.
It is, we take the policy from NHSBA, it's the board association first, that's what we start with. We don't change anything from that, any language unless we beef it up, so to speak.
Right. So the basic framework of the policy is the RSA from the NHSBA. And we can add and take away insignificant things, but we're adopting basically what they're suggesting.
Right, but I'm just saying, the New Hampshire, you know, our legislature created an RSA and that's really clear, I thought.
That's what.
And it's just like a handful of bullets and this is a lot more stuff. And the, and the school board association is fine, but they're a lobbying organization, they're not the government. And so they're, they're suggesting this policy to us, which is fine. But I'm just wondering, how much different is it than black letter RSA law?
We crosswalk and that's one of the things I have to deal with in my policies, is go to RSA and make sure everything in the RSA is in there.
So nothing here conflicts with?
Yeah.
There is, there are things that are additive to?
Maybe, I would have to, I, this wasn't my policy, so I have to go back. We rarely add to it, honestly, especially since we have so many. So it's pretty much.
The old ones had a lot added to them, but the newer and the more recently they've been updated, the less extra, it's all extroverbage, it's not even.
Yeah.
And the policy committee members see that, they see the law, they see what's added. They get the new deadlines and what's, so what's been changed from an old policy to a new policy, so they see the track changes, they can see what the law says, what we had, what the new one says and what's been changed.
Sure.
And then that comes out in the packet with a clean copy.
And then a lot of times in our policy meetings, there are attorneys and they're looking up the RSA to double check everything.
I mean, I don't mind it because, because the RSA already clearly defines it. This doesn't, if this doesn't agree, the law of the land still.
Yep.
The law of the land, so. I mean, I'm personally fine with it.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. DGA? We just did this in 2018. I feel like we just looked at this.
And there wasn't.
No.
Okay.
Any questions, issues? Awesome. DK? Humans checks manifests? Great, anybody?
They're all pretty straightforward.
They are very, they're painfully straightforward. GBGA, staff health.
So this one, like you have to have a medical exam to be hired?
Don't have to, it's just, isn't often.
If they ask.
Requested, yeah.
So how, I just wonder, like what would be an example where it would be requested?
I don't have an example.
Say you have a staff member who is upset with an injury and they are, whatever it says, I'm making a mistake, there is, I can't remember. And then they say, no, I'm going to come back. And they come back and they're, we can say, we need a doctor's note, we need a mental exam to clearly come back, as well as a staff member that may be struggling with mental illness.
Okay.
Other questions?
I think so.
Excellent. JLDBB, this is a long one, right?
It's a really long one, yeah.
Can I ask one question on this? Yeah, I thought you might. I was really pleased to see like the parent stuff in here. It's very, like there's not like stuff just being done here and the parents aren't made aware. It's like instantly parents and guardians are like included in the process. In terms of the confidentiality considerations, where we're going to be taking this information, where are we putting this information? How can we be sure that information is secure, et cetera?
Yeah, the information flows into our Alma reporting for our balance scorecard, right, which is an internal piece. And the elementary principals are actually working on that language, wouldn't say suicide ideation, but I have been done the most recent update with how the principals have decided to report that. So that we know internally, this student's at a higher risk because it's been an issue in the past. So let's say it's an issue in fourth and fifth grade and then they go to the middle school, the middle school's sixth grades know it's the seventh grade student has suicide ideation again, they could go in and the language and the language will be consistent so that in, within our system, we know the student struggled that impact. They wouldn't say suicide ideation. For example, in middle high school, I know agreed upon, Rayleigh St. Pierre, student was Rayleigh St. Pierre. We know what the student was Rayleigh St. Pierre means, that there was a suicide ideation doesn't mean suicide, which means there was ideation and prostitution or who was there. So I don't know where the elementars landed and where they are in that conversation, but they're also trying to come up with some language that is nebulous enough. It also was put in what's called our notes section in Alma, which means if a college or something asks for a discipline report, the notes section isn't part of that discipline report that that college would get or would like to know would get. So it also, we double protect just need permission that.
Are there permissions, just one more if you don't mind following the question? Is there, are there like permissions that are set in Alma such that?
I was going to answer that question. So what we've actually been talking about at the elementary school is you give certain positions, certain permissions, what's viewed in Alma. So like a classroom teacher can view their grades, their attendance, but may not be able to view that piece. That might be something that's only viewed by social workers and school counselors because of the need, it's a need to know, right? That's not something that we feel is necessary for most people to know, but there would be potentially for someone on that team. So it might be for something like this, what we've been talking about is like administrators would know, have privilege to see that information and school counselors and maybe the nurse. The nurse is one of the other pieces which is essential in this process because they're often part of a reentry meeting, the health office is part of that. So that was kind of like where we're living is like, who do we want to actually have this information? And then the verbiage for us is, would be something very similar to that. And then it would be really unviewable by 95% of the people within a building. However, kind of speaking Esther's point, if we were working with a student for fourth and fifth grade, we would definitely want the middle school to have that information, the very select few people. So that if they were like, gosh, this kid is, you know, we're seeing this kid a lot in the social worker's office, they've been sharing this, is this something that's been going on for a couple of years? Not social worker to have access, but not the classroom teachers, not the, it would really be a limit to that. So we can set those permissions. Is that kind of what you were?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what I was.
Yeah. Particularly, and Esther can speak to this, particularly the elementary level, the administrators are really probably more.
Protective.
Protective or really, I don't want to call it protective.
I know.
We continue to remind ourselves that we're dealing with young kids that are learning right now and we don't want a lot in there that's going to then potentially taint how people see them later because this is when they're making mistakes. Not that that pertains necessarily to suicidal ideation, because I don't want to put any stigma or shame around that, but we really go back and forth and we've come to a really good place. We've done a lot of work over the past year and a half of like really specifically outlining what we're going to put in, why we're going to put it in, what language we're going to use. This is kind of the tailpiece that we're working on right now.
One thing that I'd be interested in at some point, and maybe it's like a joint board thing, would be like, just to hear about from Alma, privacy stuff and how they secure the data, because it's all cloud driven and like how we, how we authenticate to things and do we have two factors? I mean, this, we've got a lot of like sensitive data that's out there. I know that they do, I'm sure they do a good job. I would just like to hear it at some point.
They're part of that New Hampshire, you know, they have that privacy act, so we would never contract with a company.
Sure, but LifeLock got hacked the other day. So I'm just saying, like there's a way you implement it, even though they have a SOC 2 report or they get whatever, trust but verify, there's, it'd be great if they could present. Yeah, and this is our kids', this is our kids' data and our records, is it going to stick around and all this stuff? So I know, I know people have concerns about that.
That's why we're working on so hard, trying to make sure that even internally, you know, internally we're protecting.
Yes.
So that's a great point, that would probably be Chris at this point.
So we can move to adopt all of those policies? Does that work? I will make a motion, Ken, did you?
Listen, I agree, yes.
I will make a motion to adopt BBBC, BBBE, DGA, DK, GBGA, JLDBB.
Do we have a second?
I got to test.
Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Just cleared the slate for next month, for the next, for mini we're going to get. All right, superintendent evaluation committee, Eric? Is there an update or?
There's not really an update. My objective is to get an update.
Okay.
For next, for next meeting. I think the last thing that I described, and you aren't here for that case, we'll just repeat it here, was that the committee did meet draft goals and objectives were drafted. Maybe I just said that. And we sent them to Dr. Ryan for feedback on that. And then the next step is really just to have those confirmed by the, by the committee. We have not yet met. I anticipate that we'll be meeting very shortly.
Okay.
And we'll have an update next month.
Great, that sounds good. Okay, and Jen, the town budget update from the back. I think this is like the first year we've actually been at these meetings, so just kind of curious to get a quick update on that.
Yeah, it's actually, it's a lot of fun. It's interesting to like learn about all their different departments and they really actually have a pretty good handle on the town budget, especially healthcare and they really, the town budget only went up by 2.2, 3%. So it's just, it's a very different, like it's just very, the questions are very supportive because I'm also on the co-op's budget committee, which sometimes those questions are not supportive. And so it was just like, it's a very different atmosphere. But it was really neat, I definitely learned a lot. One of the things I did want to point out is some of the different groups mentioned, for example, the planning board, I believe, mentioned that they are up for a small grant for communication with seniors. And so I went up to them after and I said, you know, that's something we've always talked about as a joint board or as a, a school board, is how do we communicate with people that aren't part of the school? And so we would love to kind of partner with you or, you know, see what that goes or if you guys have any success with that, just, I thought that was really cool. Another thing that I learned about is, and I remember getting emails on this, is the town did an open spaces survey. Seth made a comment that at one point he tried to get pickleball inside that, you know, that meeting room at town hall there. And he was like, yeah, he was like, it was just impossible. But it would be, I'd be curious about, you know, what that open spaces survey said, you know, how the school would fit into that and, yeah, so I could pursue that a bit. But I do think, I do think it's valuable to have, you know, the shared town school board.
Sure.
Conversation.
Great.
I can't imagine how loud pickleball would be in there.
I know, I know.
I love.
Yeah. So the final meeting is tomorrow night.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for picking those up for us, appreciate that. Okay, the principals report. Any questions or thoughts?
I have a question. So it's about the spelling bee. In the past, you have said you're not having students compete against other students in science fairs and things like that. Can you talk to me about the philosophy of that feeling versus a spelling bee?
Yeah. So the spelling bee is something that the community and students and staff have wanted to have in place for a long time. It is not necessarily an initiative that we have created or put forward as far as like what fits with our current model. We looked at not doing it for a couple of years because of that conflict.
Yeah.
And got a lot of pushback from families in wanting to have it.
Well, also coincided with COVID and the parents were like, we just need events that the kids can connect to it.
So we did them on Zoom, yeah.
We did it on Zoom. It really was kind of coinciding with COVID because we did say we were done doing it, we were doing it the final year. And then we were kind of moving away from it because it really flies in the face of, it also sends a message that that's actually.
Smart.
Right. Or that that's actually a superior intellectual ability, right? And so we were trying to say like, that doesn't line up with what we're trying to do. And then COVID hit and many families were like, could you at least do something like that? Because it connects our kids. It was kind of why we did the, we created the virtual talent show. It was just one of those things that was just bringing us together. We've actually been talking about this a lot this year because it still feels really difficult for us to, I mean, we did away with the presidential physical fitness for that very reason. Like, we're assessing you against things you're not practicing that you then can't improve on. So what are we doing? Is this like, oh, it's.
We did away with the GOV.
Right.
So there used to be that.
We're getting there.
The spelling bee, we don't really have any wiggle room in how we run it. If you do it, you follow the scripts, National Spelling Bee Protocol, and you have to run it. So well, in order to make things as decent as possible, we got some student feedback this year. We opened it up to second grade and we got feedback from students around not wanting to have like a classroom bee and then having finalists, but wanting to have everybody who's interested in the grade level. So we made a little flip, hosted a second grade bee, a third grade bee, a fourth grade bee, a fifth grade bee in order to get kids that opportunity who really wanted it. So it's something we go back and forth with every December to decide if we're going to host it or not.
How's the turnout? Is it usually?
It was huge.
Yeah.
I had 30 to 50 kids per grade level in here. It was.
That's pretty good.
One thing I think that we do kind of, I don't want to throw us on it because we have some, is that they are very supportive of one another. It is not a competitive environment. Like they are, they stay, they cheer each other on, which is kind of like what we get concerned with. And part of this is as well as like the, this is more, this is more accessibility because it isn't like you can study for it, is really just kind of those, you know what I mean? Whereas like it becomes an equity issue when like you can study and you have support at home. And like, that's very different than this doesn't, this is everybody, there is no studying, you're just coming and doing that. So it certainly doesn't align perfectly with our pedagogy and our philosophy. There are parts that are at least swallowable, digestible, that's the word I was looking for. Yeah, we are working on weaning ourselves away.
Some good conversations have come up in the past two days of doing it. It was all day yesterday and then today I finished two grade levels. And some good conversations came up, like there were some kids that said things like, well, I can't do this because I'm not smart enough. Or they're smarter, so they're going, and it was like, well, let's talk about smart. Let's talk about what that really means. And, you know, everybody has these different strengths and this doesn't identify you. But we're proud of you for coming and celebrating the fact that you're already in the top 40 because you're the only ones who showed up, right? And so we tried to talk about that and talked about trying out next year if you wanted to. And, you know, trying to make the most of something like that, which does not fit with our typical philosophy.
Yeah, I have very mixed feelings.
Same with chess.
Right, we're struggling with chess.
Yeah, I have very mixed feelings on it, but I know from conversations we've had with you before that this doesn't feel like it lines up.
It's not.
I gotta say though, I think what you said, Kate, like having the opportunity to work through not doing something, like not winning something, that's important to do in life. I mean, it's important to also compete. We have to do that. A lot of people have to do that. So I, I don't.
I checked in on a lot of second graders today.
I think it's good to have the conversations to help the kids through that loss. I remember the word that I missed.
That's amazing. Good for you.
No, and I didn't, and I didn't get better at it and I didn't go learn and I didn't, like, I'll never be a spelling bee person. But I also, it didn't crush me, but I remember the word.
Yeah.
You know?
You don't have to spell that word.
It was heirloom.
That's a hard word.
I thought we were talking about like a, I thought we were talking about a factory machine that involved air.
Air.
You didn't get a good sentence for it.
Well, I didn't ask. And that tells you something. But I'm just saying, like, I just, I hate to throw the baby out with the bathwater with some of these things, especially if you get good turnout and, and parents like it.
Yeah, some kids were in better spirits today, checked in on some, checked in on some at lunchtime today. So definitely a range of emotions. And then some got down tight, like we went with six from each grade level. And so when you're sitting with four kids and three of them are going to make it and someone's not. I mean, there were some moments for some really good conversation. It was hard, you know, so.
Any more questions?
Yeah.
After school activities.
Yeah.
It seemed to be.
It's hopping.
Right?
Yeah.
Those, the pickup line at 415 on Tuesdays and Wednesdays is like last year's drop off line.
Yeah, it's great. The first offering this fall, I think we had nine offerings and I think we're up to 16 for this one. So part of it too is the educators ensuring that they have the time to commit to those weeks. And then or also in the fall, we've cross country and a lot of the people that assist with cross country also do the after school enrichment. So they couldn't do both at the team. So it was exciting to be able to, I was compiling it to get to send home, I was like, ooh, we're really increasing. Prior to COVID, we had like 24 to 26 offerings each session. So we're working our way back up. We have a number of new adults doing it too. So either new staff here or people that have never done it before, which is exciting because they're offering different things. So it is, it's feeling good again.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And I love the outdoor pickups. That never felt good, doing that pickup in the foyer. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say, I was noticing your admin update where you have the five categories of things you want to update us on. And I thought that was great. Thank you for thinking about that. I think the only thing I would maybe just add is, you know, something I always want to know from you guys is, what are, you know, concerns you guys see coming down the road that would affect the budget? Obviously not operational, but, or would sort of affect policy or things that the board would want to weigh in.
A forecast.
Yeah, right.
If they didn't fall under these categories?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And other?
Okay.
Anything else?
I do have a question. What's the scan drill?
Yeah, this is, no, it's always been one, but it's not one that's practiced very often. So scan is an unknown object, right? Or so maybe we, and this would, in most cases, it would be considered like a bomb threat or we're concerned about something in a backpack that might be not, should be in a backpack or a chemical that we're concerned about that we hear a report about. And so with the protocol for us is you start high, you go medium, you go low in your space. So we actually did one last week. Was it last week, this week?
It's like AM or TSA.
Yeah, no, it was last week, I think. What was really cool about it is we also had been our SMS safety committee and Rich Kane was there and Officer Amanda was there. And we had, I was able to debrief what we had experienced doing it. And there were a couple of things that jumped out at us that was really, I'm glad we did it were, so first of all, I also planted stuff because I wanted to see if we were actually doing it, which I know is a little sneaky. What can I say? So I planted an onion bag in the cafeteria and then I planted an unknown box that kind of looks suspicious upstairs. We started the drill at 9:01. By 9:06, the bag had been found and the burn office had been notified, which is like awesome because that's also like a not used space. And so people were like being thoughtful. The box was about 15 minutes in, but even that was like, there are boxes in the hallway all the time. But this was kind of, it was in a stairwell, so it was like a, the box shouldn't be there. And there are not people in that area all the time. So that was really exciting that both items were found that felt good about like, we're taking this seriously. We're actually, you know, following the procedures. But the procedure also mentions to then report all clear to the main office so we know area. Well, all of a sudden we're getting like phone calls, phone calls. And it's like, we can't field 50 spaces in a matter of time. So Susan and I were able to create a document that we can share every, that's just available all the time in our drive under safety. So if we're doing it, any person that's checking their area can be like, I'm in room four, it's all clear. They don't have to call down. The only reason they would call down or walkie is if they located something suspicious. So like, it was a really good, like, let's run through this, let's debrief that. So then when Rich Kane and Amanda were there, they were like, oh my gosh, we've been waiting for someone to do this. This is so important. So we'll be sharing this out tomorrow at the SAU. I went about like, because they probably don't have the document, they're probably having phone calls. And if you think about CMS or the high school, you're talking about 200 phone calls in a really short amount of time. And this, just like simple things. So it was great. I was excited that people like were following all the expectations, that we were able to locate the items, that we came up with a revised process. That felt really good.
Carrie, any other questions on that?
Okay. Aaron, just to answer your question, so the law states that we have to do 10 drills a year. Mandates that we do that. Six of them are to be fire drills and then four any other emergency procedure drills. And so we do a variety of them throughout the year, you know, to make sure we're meeting those expectations.
Are surprise drills? Because I know some of the fire drills, everybody knows. Are there any unannounced? Like, is it mandated how many need to be, the kids are prepared for versus how many are surprises?
No. I think it's, so my experience when, and particularly in elementary school, you don't want a lot of unannounced because it's the anxiety that's that can cause for children, whether it's the sound or the light or, you know, or the, whereas having worked in middle schools and high schools, it's very different because they've had years of practice and they're a little bit more averse to like interruptions and that. But we try to do very few unannounced. That being said, we also have students that may have, you know, experienced significant trauma in the past. And those, those students, usually through team decision, maybe don't experience it unannounced. That we actually meet with them a half hour before or the morning before. One person meets with them. We don't even share it with the classroom teacher. It would be either myself or one of the school counselors. And we know, we come up with a plan because it can be really triggering for, for someone.
Thanks. Okay. All right. Moving on to old business or goals. So I know I wasn't here the last meeting. I got a little bit of a recap from Esther. So I just wanted to open it up to everybody. Just looking at the time and what we have coming up in the next few weeks, I was kind of floating the idea around in my head of maybe possibly holding a workshop in March for this. We have a March meeting, is that? I know we have the district meeting on the 6th, but we also have, we do, okay. So that would be something we could either tack on to that or do at a separate time.
It's a good one to do with that meeting only because the budget is kind of overwhelming.
That's what, yeah.
Taking a lot of time.
I know, and that was why I didn't originally make it a workshop at the last meeting was because we had FAP, then our meeting. I didn't want to also hook on workshop to that. So, but I'm open to whatever, if anybody has any other thoughts on.
Are the elections that first, like the 7th of March?
It's the 14th.
Oh, wait, yeah, so that's the end of the day. It is.
Is it the day before your appointment?
Yeah, when, when is the election then? That is, I should know this, it was on the town website.
14.
And our meeting is the 15th?
Yeah.
22nd.
23rd, okay.
Stratum, or is it 15th?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's the way it was with my year. I was elected that night and then you called me the next morning. Okay.
You're right.
I know. Okay, so any other?
One meeting. We're going to slowly ease you in.
Be here tomorrow.
The only, only thing that I wanted to do was I, we mentioned my goal and we mentioned that it was, I think it was decided that it was determined to be inappropriate. But I wanted to read it because it wasn't on the record. And the goal that I had proposed was the Stratum Memorial School aims for at least 80% grade level proficiency in the English language, arts and mathematics for fifth graders as measured by statewide assessments. For the 2023-2024 academic year, SMS will increase fifth grade mathematics proficiency 15% from 45% as measured in 2223 to 60%. And you'll notice there's not a ELA suggested thing in there because we exceeded that. So I just wanted that to be on the record. And I also would like it to go on the record that I, although I appreciate the fact that we haven't done this previously, it still is a shawl and I feel like it's negligent not to do it. I don't know, it didn't sound like there's support for talking about that now or before the election. So I'm not going to put everybody through the process of making a motion only to have it not seconded or voted upon. But I did want that to be on the record. If there's any questions about that or any discussion about why I put that on there, that's great. And if I am here for March, I would love to dig into the inappropriateness of that, of that goal. My thought process around it was to create something that was measurable, comparable. So anyway.
Okay, great.
I'll leave it there.
Anybody else want to comment to that?
No, I would enjoy that conversation too. I think that sounds great. Yeah, I guess, I mean, we just want to make sure we have, if there is a new person elected in March, we want them to participate in that goal session.
Yes, definitely.
Um, if it is, Eric, that's easy. And if it's not, then we'd have to push it to April probably. When did they show up for their first meeting?
The next day.
The next day.
Yeah, you show up.
Okay.
Jumping right into the fire.
Okay.
That's right.
I, I would rather do it sooner than later. Because I don't, I don't know that we'll come to an agreement in the first meeting anyway. Like, it may take a couple, a couple sessions. And I think it's important to, I mean, these goals are very outdated at this point. Just start fresh with the new board and just move right on forward that way. So that's kind of my thought process on it, but we can, we can talk about it in February or if anybody has any other thoughts on that. So, um, yeah, anything else? And thank you guys for submitting goals. I know some of you worked very hard on those, so I appreciate that. All right, I guess we'll move on to new business. I'll do the board clerk first. Esther, is that okay? So we, we don't have a board clerk position filled at the moment. School district, sorry. Clerk, so we needed to appoint somebody to that for the ballots and it needs to be done as soon as possible. So Jen Scraftford thankfully found somebody who is interested in. And so I would like to make a motion to appoint Katie Steele to that position. And basically what she'll do with that position is she'll sign off on the ballot in the meeting minutes for the March 6th, 6th district meeting. And that's pretty much it. I mean, you were in that position, that's pretty much it. So anyway, she's happy to help out, which is great. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Katie Steele as school board clerk.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you.
You guys know her?
Yeah, she's so good.
She's so great on that fifth grade committee group.
She's so like, like, let's just do it. She's like, let's get in and do it.
No, she, Katie Steele. S T E E L E.
Three Es.
So I will, I'll, S T E E L E, I believe. I can email her tomorrow and let her know and then coordinate, we have to coordinate. I know Debbie, Becky, the top office, I talked to her, wants her information and everything too. So, okay, perfect. All righty, and that position will be open in March, if anybody knows of anybody. As a treasure, we need two people.
If we're not probably convinced.
I know. Yes, so, spread the word. Okay, so great, we have that done. So also, we need to decide how we're going to, the budget presentation for February 1st and the March 6th meeting and how we're going to do that. Last year, I think you created a slide deck and then Cheryl pumped some slides into it too. I know I spoke to the contract.
So that's the, that's the larger meeting. The public hearing in the past, I can, I don't, you guys know everyone, I'm just going to speak to like the past practice. So it's typically three slides. Introduction, drivers.
Yep.
Bottom dollar, that's really it. It's like a percentage increase of the bottom dollar because that really is, people come, they just hear you talk about the drivers and the answer, and then they ask any questions. So it's a pretty straightforward, I think in the years past, we might have maxed out at three minutes. Like, it's really very fast. So it really isn't intended to be like the narrative that we then use at the bigger town meeting is the narrative of here's examples and its pictures and its stories of like, here's how that money is spent and here's how you can see this directly impacting kids. And that's a bit more specific with a few more slides. And that's the one that Cheryl, last year had some slides that she wanted to talk about the history of the trust funds.
Got it, right, okay, perfect. So I guess if you want to speak to that.
Happen at the district meeting. The public hearing, I imagine, brought Katie the few slides and questioning.
Yep.
At the district meeting, usually each board member, or the board member that feels the most confident and most comfortable takes the warrant out for the, remember the moderator runs the whole thing. So you don't run it. And so you would, say, let's say you're doing warrant number one, the operating budget. So you would, he would read that, the moderator would read that. And then you would speak to the main drivers and maybe more detail, some, you know, suggestions that FAP has talked about, et cetera. And then I'm thinking, Ken or Kate, you would do the negotiating one because you run the negotiating ones. And you're just talking, you're not talking all about the line, you're just talking about the dollar amount, like, what's the drivers for those dollar amounts? And then whoever did that, I'm looking at you, Ken, thinking that, Kate, you might do the first one, and you guys might decide to split it up. Then you usually just speak to the next one that just says, and if this fails, this warrant out who gives us the opportunity to call a special meeting, and you read that. So those two things go together. And the fourth one, just read, the moderator reads, and that's about it. So really, it's explaining the main drivers and expenses of the negotiation article, and then explaining the main drivers of the operating budget.
Okay.
Which, and then usually, I would hope that Kate would do like a slideshow beginning with kids, and this is what, you know, you guys approved these kinds of things last year, and this is what the money's being spent on.
Yep.
So like, the difference is like, the public hearing, I would just write, a driver is personnel.
Got it.
At the, the district meeting, you might be, if it was whoever, it would be like, when we talked about personnel, we specifically looked at our data and felt like we needed a math specialist because going back to like, we saw our data, we felt, and that would be like the more specific, and you would then say, that's specifically how that would be impactful. It's kind of like the difference is like, like, the public hearing is pretty, just broad strokes, and then your district meeting is like, specifically, like, you saw personnel was up by two percent. That is because we are proposing a math and a second literacy specialist. That was what we talked about last year with that line.
Yep.
Like, it just gives them a bigger, like, more identifiable piece because it's more granular than the, the public hearing.
It's a fairly, I wouldn't say easy, you have to explain even if it's a higher percentage because of the health insurance, that's a big number, and because of the.
Special ed and tech.
Yep.
And tech.
Both of the two.
It's easy to explain.
Add those two up, you can see how it's impacted and changed from the bottom line from last year to this year. Those are future main drivers, and then the technology is a huge number, and they don't speak to that. And certainly, usually, whoever's presenting, it kind of works with administration, so they know the slideshow and what you want, and then if you have questions about how to explain it, you know, you go through that, and certainly, have their main, you know, for negotiation stuff. So what's nice about it is that it does present the board as, you all approve the budget. And so it is your budget now, it's one that initially was the school's development, and you have changed it or adapted or asked questions to then own a budget. So after your public hearing, a technique becomes your budget as you approve it. And you need to change it based on public input, or you don't, but you approve a budget that night, and that's the one that's presented at the school district meeting. So that's right, it becomes the board's budget. So we're trying to have our boards do that. Exeter Board has always presented theirs at the public hearing, and at, they are an SB two, so they have delivered. The co-op has, the co-op boards have been a little different. They have Molly present the information. So we're hoping to move them to also doing the same thing, because you are elected, and this is a huge function of the board, its finances. So again, it's the board's decision. If you want Kate to do it, then we can do it the way we traditionally have done it. But I would hope that you at least consider it, because I think it's important as you weigh in on just being a board member, which is policy and finance first and foremost. So that's why I try to have boards, at least, not that if someone asks a question, you know, you can certainly say, Kate, could you, you know, can you explain that? Or Esther, can you speak to that? All that, that's why we're there, as a resource for you and the public.
Okay.
We're hoping it works.
Any thoughts on? Comments on it?
Do you think there's a good way to quantify like the inflation aspect to the budget? Do you think there's a way that we could think through some of that stuff? Because some stuff was in contract already, other things were not. There's, because I think most people are going to get that. And that would be a helpful thing to communicate, I think, to people because they already anticipate it.
Yeah, we can add Molly, you know, she can do a nice little pie chart. This percentage of the budget, which is a huge, is contractual and really.
We did that last year.
I think that's really helpful, the slides.
The size of the pie is what's, you know, the two percent is really what we can manipulate as a board.
It is truly like three percent that's manipulatable, the rest is contracted services or things that are not flexible.
So that's a, I always like to see that slide because it's so visual and it helps you.
The town did that with like a dollar bill.
Yeah. Skinny little. That's a great image. It was a pie chart last year, but that was one of the things we did last year.
And then we had the, for you coming, had that, or if I do it, whoever, but we had like the, the grid up that we used for the teacher's salary, and so we could explain the coal increase and all that. So it was very, I really didn't have to say much to it because it was all right there on the slide. So I think when people can see it that way, it makes it a lot better. And then you also have paper handouts of all of this, right? And they're available to the public.
You'll have a slideshow, which if there's a pie chart in it, or, you know, slides that you want to add in in the right spots to Kate's or Chute's, whatever you want to organize that. We run those up to the slides too. We can do a main driver cheat sheet if you want, you know, they're using to explain it. We're gonna use the main drivers and hold it to list.
Usually in the slides.
For the public, because they can see the dollar amounts.
We did it right in the slides last year.
Yeah.
I just pulled that up recently to look at it, to see what it looked like, and it had all that in there, so yeah. Yeah, I think I'm comfortable with that, and I think if you do the opening presentation, just talking about the school and the kids and all that stuff, I think that that's.
So what I'll do is, I'll do that, and then I'll just make you a collaborator on the, what I agree, and then you can do whatever you want with after that. Does that work?
Yeah. Does, does everybody feel okay with that idea? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay.
And is there already that stock thing for like the pie chart thing and the stuff from last time? Is that something, or do we need to ask somebody to something?
Molly will do it, yeah. Like, she, they created all that when, when we did the teacher, and all the charts and everything, yeah.
Put in the right numbers.
Yeah.
I was just thinking, if they already have it, it's way easier than.
Yeah.
You don't have to recreate.
You don't figure.
I want to try to flash you whatever you want.
Okay.
Make it. And instead of, you can make it pretty in a spot if you want, or you just shove it in that the way it is, it's up to you.
That was funny last year, it was like my slides, Ellen and Cheryl's slides. It was like, helpful and great.
Good balance.
Yep. So what do you think, Esther, going forward? Should we assign those pieces now, or should I just work with eight?
Well, really, it would need to be, I think, the board would want you or Ken to do the negotiating one because you're doing the bottom line, and then if you're doing the operating one, it's kind of much more of a book for a message that you guys can make.
Wait, what, fault to me? Sorry, I was writing, like, taking notes.
Would you be comfortable presenting the, the contract, the pair of contracts?
Sure, I was the bad guy in the negotiation, I'd be the bad guy for the town presentation too.
All right, that sounds good.
Then pull it into them, which is just the explanation of why it's on there. Then the bar area is for, so it would be the two of you.
Okay.
Like I said, worth the effort, if there's questions, if you think about it, I'm willing on the slide to have this information, just email me and Molly, because I'm going to kick it to Molly anyway, and she's going to make. Can I have a chart of?
Yeah, I'd like to see what was used for the teachers last year.
It was super simple, yeah, I'll show it to you. I can send you the whole slide deck. Yep. Yeah, okay.
And we'll just make sure it's just the three of us, because if we have additional, it can only be two board members or you get skirmish. So it'll just be between the three of us.
Okay, that sounds good. All right. Thank you.
In the spelling bee.
Okay, but the February board meeting, so we have, we have the hearing on the first, and then there's technically a board meeting on the fifteenth?
Right, which I will not be here, we have the national conference in San Antonio.
So we're wondering if we really need to have that meeting? I mean, if something comes up, we can always meet, but Esther was saying, maybe we don't need it since we were already meeting on the first for the public hearing, and then we're meeting in March sixth, and then we also have a March meeting. I just didn't know if.
February breaks in.
And February breaks in too, how people thought about maybe not having.
Love a canceled meeting.
February meeting, is anybody feeling like that we don't really need it? Because people have just, I mean, we'll, we'll literally have to do the.
Right, and the March meeting's actually earlier.
Yeah.[1610.01]